I've been getting an email from, like, a visual communications guy asking about bringing names and stuff like that, if the city wanted to work together and discount this stuff. Do you, has he read the email yet?
Maybe. I will tell you, I have so many filters on my email from solicitors.
I was just not gonna respond unless he comes over for an interview.
I had so many solicitations that they, somebody who's got a great thing to sell to the city.
Yeah.
And of course.
Well, we're random.
Yeah, we have, I mean, very.
No, I'm just saying, we're gonna bring.
And we gotta volunteer because in that world.
Who's there?
Is it the park?
Park?
Yeah.
I didn't hear that. Maybe I should read his file.
Do we have idols?
Who knows? God, this thing.
Just say your name.
If we do, guess what?
Hi, how are you today? Hey.
You're tomorrow.
How you doing tomorrow, huh?
Think you're tomorrow?
Forty.
Oh, great.
Think we got forty is it?
Good.
I thought thirty-five.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, me too. I'm tired and cold.
Just don't get used to it, isn't it true?
It'll be two below by Saturday.
Ah, jeez. Yeah, I thought today was a heat wave and I was talking to somebody and they said, well, what kind of relatives? Yeah.
Anything else go down a little bit.
Yeah.
Now, where are you at?
Put you over there. Yep, next place. I was trying to space you guys out as much as I could.
Oh, that's where I'm in my right's father's. Please, yeah.
Hello.
October.
Ryan Casey.
I go see you.
Happy birthday. We seem to be one-sided today, huh? Where are you right? Taylor's not. Yeah. Just bring your stuff. Perfect. This will help you.
All right.
We kill here.
Oh, gosh.
Josh.
Yeah, he's making.
He's up there.
Long.
So, you driving around the other day?
Oh, yeah.
Thought about like flashing more lights and everything.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Did you keep that over?
I have, yeah.
Can I help a little bit?
Yes.
Here, Jeff.
Hey.
I'm looking through our house. They were birds.
Yeah, they like that. They like the weather.
There you go.
Why did I remember people on the corner?
Hmm?
Um, it's something.
Oh, obviously.
Oh, I'm in.
Well, we're all our neighbors. They, the, from, working.
So, ten or one. No, it's okay. First of all. Was it login or something? Yeah.
The city and they're like, oh, unless it's in the street. Oh, I don't know about it. And they come to you and they're like, call the city, you know? So, we were stuck with this pick-up. That I talked to the policeman, said, next time, pull into the street and come.
Adam didn't hear that. See. Can you keep it? Sorry. Appreciate it.
Yep.
I have, I have not much, but we have movies that are really interesting. They're all good. Apps. And this. We don't have enough in that. And I have the baby with Christmas, but I've seen a sad story or a scene that I've asked in several. I actually want to say that's just a tragedy, so I feel comfortable. And after all, I'm asking about pretty much. And both of them just hasn't really screwed through.
My ex-estate.
Hey, um.
He does a bird. How long has he been doing his ear? Yep.
Well, ask me.
You work for Phil's Hill. So, I'm always.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Um. That's because of the, you know, having to speak to someone. You're trying to tell us as smart as you can, you know, but. Somebody who's working on. Yeah. So.
I would say, I would say.
See.
So, I guess.
I did.
I don't stand.
You can do it.
Yeah. Fine, how about you?
Pretty good.
That's right. Don't make me break it.
Everything on the screen, I'm there.
What for you?
Can't wait to, I'm sure. It's like most of the rich side. I saw like a beautiful. Wait. Rock. So, you go up with your bike.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah. How do you access it?
I was gonna think.
I just wanna know. You can go around.
Anybody.
Yeah.
Didn't you see? The ground. John's boy.
Oh.
Yeah.
In the way.
Yes.
I don't know.
Yeah, people out there with their dogs. And. What a shame, Michelle. Oh.
Can't you do it?
I'm sorry, did you ever know me?
I don't know. Five minutes.
Yeah, I can almost.
Parks were small. The border is on, on the. The. Yeah. Two. March. That was. That was freezing. That just. That's freezing, yes. Right, at six. Six, is that it? The ding? That was the ding. The chime, six o'clock chime. Okay, you can start and then Gordy can join us. Hello. So, now. Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the February seventh, two thousand twenty-two Parks Commission meeting for Orno. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. Uh, let's start by doing a pledge of allegiance. All right, so we have our agenda here. It looks like Jan, you were able to add number eight.
Yes.
To the agenda that happened today, and that's in the ones that were outside too.
Correct.
Okay, great. So, we have, um, a small agenda, but good. Uh, what is, let me just kinda go through the agenda real quick. The main purpose of tonight is to adopt our goals for two thousand twenty-two for the commission here. We met last month in a workshop session and discussed a lot of the, what we wanted to do for the year. We have a whole docket of things to do. And so, uh, this is more a, uh, administrative kind of step to adopt those, um, those goals for the year. There was some confusion about, because some of the goals relate to Lowry Woods, relate to Beeterwood, relate to Summit. There was some confusion, I think, about that we're going to take some of those items or issues matters up tonight. And that's really not on the agenda, um, but I just wanted to clarify that for anyone who's here. We're, of course, welcome any comments that you guys want from the audience, um, and on any subject. Uh, please do, um, contribute, but I just wanted to clarify what's on the agenda and what's not on the agenda tonight for this, for this commission. So, the first, uh, matter of business is just to approve the meeting minutes from our November twenty-first, or November first, two thousand twenty-one, uh, meeting minutes. Anyone have a motion to approve?
Come.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion moved. Okay, so we come to our public comments section. Please, if you're here, um, to talk, please do approach, state your name, your address. Um, please limit to five minutes. Looking forward to hearing your comments. No one else here first.
Hi, my name is. Good evening. It's good to see you again. My name's Elisa Benson. I'm at twelve twenty-eight Lyman Avenue. Uh, just, I'll keep this real brief, just two things. First, it's been a while since November, when I presented for the natural playground or play area at Summit, and I just wanted to reiterate that I'm a resource of lots of information, whether for you or anybody in the public. If anybody would like any information at all, um, please come to me at any time.
Great.
That's fine. First, and second is, I'm very pleased to be interviewing at the end of this month for a position on Parks, whether it be now or in the future. So, again, any questions at all, please reach out. I understand that it'll be in front of City Council. It won't be here at Parks. So, again, I just wanna say that I'm good, and if anyone ever has any questions, not you or the public, don't.
Thank you.
I have your question.
Wonderful.
I was just gonna say, yeah, if you wanna get together ahead of your interviews with any of us, um, please reach out.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Feels better? Um, hi, I'm Barbara Schmidt, obviously, from fifty Landmark Drive. And I, again, cannot answer any questions or take any comments because of the mirror case. Uh, I just have a brief statement. Um, citizens of Orno, for over three years, this Park Commission and City Council have knowingly broken municipal laws. First, ordinance twenty-two one fourteen, no bikes in parks, have been broken in Beeterwood Park and Lowry Woods. Because there is so much evidence, Orno School District two seventy-eight has been named in our Minnesota environmental rights act, mirror case. Secondly, this Parks Commission knowingly broke Minnesota State trespass law six oh nine dot six oh five for years. They told children to ride over private property of Lowry Woods past a city of Orno sign that said no bikes. They were encouraged to cut trails and cut on private property behind Beeterwood and Lowry Woods. Thirdly, this Parks Commission encouraged snowmobile riding in Beeterwood Park this winter, which is against ordinance twenty-two dash one forty-four, no motorized vehicles in parks. On September twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, the Orno police were called to Beeterwood Park and found one of the coaches from the mountain bike team taking four snowmobiles all through Beeterwood, identified as Mr. Chris Clover. He was overheard telling the Orno police that the team had been given Beeterwood Park for their use and that it was okay to ride there. Snowmobiles have ridden consistently through Beeterwood this winter, regularly over the soccer field as well. Most egregiously, children have learned that breaking laws and damaging public property is condoned by school officials and City Hall. Just a few weeks ago, a known mountain biker was seen plotting race courses for construction in Beeterwood. Hundreds of residents have signed petitions to stop bikes in parks. Please stand up for Parks, stand up for Orno. Thank you.
I will say those comments are very disappointing to hear. And I will say for the record, Ms. Schmidt, that I have reached out to you several times. Personally, you have my phone number, and I've wanted to talk to you about anything over the past, what has it been, two years? That this matters been going on?
You can call my attorney, Brian, anytime.
I've invited you to come out and walk.
Anytime, you can call my attorney.
Anyone else?
Okay. Tell me I'm speaking too loud. I got kind of a loud voice. My name is Bill Map. I live on, uh, eighty-five Crispifory Circle, which is just property east of the Lowry Woods area. And I'm here with my wife Abby in strong opposition to the mountain biking project being proposed for Lowry Woods. I, um, talked with, uh, Mr. Edwards early last year about this. And at that time, he assured me there was no, no plans to make any, um, access to the woods or to have any biking projects in the area. But then I got a, um, proposal from, that was written by the John Withrow, the mountain biking coach for Orno, saying, in the fall of two thousand twenty, in coordination with the Orno Parks Departments, Orno Bike West Hunk MTV team had a six-week trial period of using mountain bikes in Lowry Woods. There was no notice given to the public that I know about this, certainly not to me, who is right on the border of the woods. And, um, I guess that was kind of in conflict since it was in two thousand twenty, they said that was done. And I don't know if it was done or not, but John Withrow said it was done, so I had to take him at word. So, I guess, one of the things I want to say is I'd like to see a little more transparency between the Parks Commission and the neighbors in that area, so that any time, um, there's meetings or proposals or anything else that we're advised of it, and we can take and read them anyway. Um, I just wanted to mention, when we bought our property over there and we built our house where we moved in in ninety-six, just a couple of years after the nature conservancy had given the property to the city of Orno, Orno, with all the contingencies that they had set on it as a nature conservancy. And I'm not gonna read this thing to you, but I just wanna read a few sentences. It says, "The land shall be permanently maintained as a park or natural area in its predominantly natural and wooded condition. Use of the land shall be restricted to scientific, educational, recreational, and aesthetic uses, not in conflict with the land's natural and wooded condition." You just heard "natural" condition, and that's used six times in this letter. So, you can see that's very important to the, uh, nature conservancy that this is adhered to. It seems like that's, uh, kind of not what mountain biking is all about, because the proposal calls for making trails and then moving earth around to make bank corners where they're sharp. I've never seen natural trails in a walking park that are just naturally sharp corners so that people can run, zoom around, but they need them banked. Bikes would need that. So, that's basically what I'm just asking for, is more transparency. And, uh, let's talk about it, because this is something that we, as, uh, neighbors on the east side of the park are very interested in keeping the nature of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Ela Benson. I'm about spring hill road. And I'm here to talk about the Summit Beach Park, which in two thousand nineteen, we were in a meeting here when it was first brought up to have the Long Lake Brewing, Brewing Club build a building for their shells and as a clubhouse. And we were rereading the minutes from that meeting today, and, of course, had, it was a very preliminary meeting. And we all expected that, you know, we have more time to hear more about it and more input. But, um, of course, the pandemic happened, which I'm sure had a lot to do with it. But we heard little about it until, you know, about a month ago. All of a sudden, it sounded if, you know, it was at the planning commission. Now, I can't remember how it, how your commission, the Park Commission, whether they had, you felt you had heard enough about it to pass it on to another, um, you know, pass it up the line. Our understanding was that this, this was kind of preliminary. And as we talked about, I know the Orno Council is interested in planning for the parks, planning for the use, public-private partnerships. However, of course, all of the parks in Orno are not the same. And where Beeterwood, of course, lends itself to playing, you know, to, to baseball and various structured, or structured activities. Some of our parks, like what we just heard about, are more natural areas. And especially the Summit Beach Park, which is very small. And when the Brewing Club says they are going to set this huge building, which I found on their website and looked at, into the hill, it would still require, what's kind of unique about that little park is you have some pine, this kind of pine trees on a knoll, and you have a little bit of open space, and then you have the beach. But it's several ecosystems in one little park. And it's very quiet and very popular in the summer for just picnics and swimming and just enjoying the lake. So, uh, obviously, we're concerned that by letting in a group that is quite active in the summer, with both in the, in the morning, you have the classes, I think, for the younger rowers, who probably would wanna stay for, you know, after their rowing, because it's such a nice park. And then the evening, you've got the adults. So, it just, I just think that little park would cannot take that use. And so, I would look, and first of all, we really, whereas it was kind of promised that we could have more time to talk and develop, you know, hear, kind of hear about the plans of the rowing club and maybe, you know, see how we could maybe come to some agreement. Of course, that never happened. And I guess that's also kind of upsetting. And I have lived at that end of the life in many years. So, thank you.
Again. Thank you.
My name is Jim Dustrude, and I'm kind of a foreigner here, uh, so thanks for listening to me as well. Uh, I, my address is two thousand one Arbor Lane, Mountain. Um, I, I came here because I heard about the Summit Park, and I have a strong desire to keep, to keep it as close to what it is as possible. It seems like that huge building, or a big building, and then a big parking lot also, is going to pretty much decimate that small area, it seems to me. And, um, I would like, part, part of my concern about it is, um, you're gonna attract quite a bit of traffic, I think, if, if that development were to take place, quite a bit of traffic to that area. And, uh, Old Long Lake Road and East Long Lake Road are two of my favorite roads in this whole area. And I'm. And I'm, I'm just afraid that attracting that much traffic, that much extra traffic, would be fairly catastrophic to that park and those roads. So I'd like to help find another place for them. I hear that they're using, what is it, the restaurant?
Burches.
Burches, yeah. And I drove through there tonight on the way here thinking, before I knew that, I thought, this looks like a good multi-use place for Long Lake Rowing Club. If they could utilize that big parking lot. I don't know if there's, I would think the rowers are there, not so much at dinnertime when they need the big parking lot for the restaurant. I just thought that might be a good multi-use option, alternative. So I realize you're not gonna discuss it tonight, but that's what I came for, so let's, oh yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for listening, and I'll say goodbye.
Good evening. Elizabeth Weir, seventy-five Bridgewater Drive. I'm here for Summit Park Two, and I would like to urge you to think about the spirit in which the park was created, to people of Orno. Bruce Dayton in nineteen eighty gave the park to keep, help keep the east end of Long Lake peaceful. And he wanted it kept in its natural condition, as, and this is all attested to by his family, his brothers and the younger generation. So what might be legal is one thing, what might be the appropriate thing to do is quite another. And I know your, your role is to make sure the parks are well-used. This little park is loved, and it's been well-used for a generation or two. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elena. I apologize, I don't know how to do this. But I just wanted to say exactly the same thing that she said. We've used the park for, I think, thirty-plus years. And my mom swims at that park every morning and every night in the summer. And so it's really valuable, I think, to the community. And I take my son there, and there's a lot of people who have picnics there. So it's kind of the one place that's tiny. And I drive forty minutes or thirty minutes for me to grow, just to use it. But a lot of people in our community use it for picnics and love to see it. Stay small, get huge, but all the way.
Excuse me, could you state your name and address for the record?
Elena, and I live in Mid-Grove, but.
That's okay, this is one of the addresses.
One zero eight eight six Glacier Lane, North.
Hey, everybody, I'm Fergus Weir at seven-ten Gander Road, Orno. Just wanna echo pretty much everyone that's been speaking. Summit Park, I think, just the spirit of the Dayton's and keeping it natural, not having a structure on it at all. And I guess I'm kind of coming into this relatively new, I don't know the history over the years of this discussion, but the west end of Long Lake, where the boats are coming in, and I know you guys created a small frisbee park, but that potentially, to me, would seem like a better place to have a, an area or a structure that could house the boats for the rowing club. It's somewhat developed anyway, and I think there's additional development going on. But I'm sure you've thought about that, but I don't know what the other side of it is. I'm sure the residents there might be.
Different, different city.
Well, there we have it. All right. We may have said that, but anyway, I'd like to, like, see Summit Park stay natural without a structure.
Thanks, Fergus. Anyone else?
I want, I wanted to say that I love seeing those rowers out on Long Lake. It's just a wonderful thing, so I think it's something to support somehow.
Great.
I'm Greg Boy from twenty-one eighty-five Grand Avenue. And I agree with these people, you know, I've started learning about this when I saw it. And I thought, you know, this is really good to learn about what's going on in the wake and stuff, because I don't always do that. But I don't understand how the rowing club figures that it has to come in at Summit Park when, I don't know how it was working with Burches, and it might have been kind of hard. But I know I've heard there's another area too, with the parking lot. I don't understand how that can't be, you know, accessed. And with the committee that Victoria Seals got going and the other committee, my concern is, okay, she started that with the understanding that, okay, I'm starting this committee because of all the social media and, you know, what's here and what's there, and is this true, is that true? How is she going to, you know, say to this committee, okay, this is what's going on? And, you know, go back and forth with that information? And that's, that's what I'm concerned about. What else? Yeah, I think that's mainly it. I just, oh, Summit. So, you know, I agree, you know, it's, it's nice for them to be out there on the lake, but I just see something, I don't understand how there can be something different. That's repeating myself. I understand. And Summit Park, how, okay, they're gonna put this building. Why do they feel that, okay, they're saying, okay, this is gonna be for the public, you know, these certain things are gonna be for the public? But how can that be justified that, okay, this is gonna be for the public, but they need to put this building in? What is that reason? I don't understand it. The trade-off, you know? That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Eleanor Winston again. I forgot the other thing. I was, I know you're gonna discuss playground equipment for the park. And I would encourage you to look at natural, the natural playground, which would fit so nicely as opposed to kind of bright colors and everything.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Did our, are we deep-fanned here?
Yeah, sorry. Did the rowing club ask Long Lake about the potential option versus?
We haven't talked to them since March of twenty nineteen.
Oh, okay.
Would be weird for us to say.
What, yeah. Let me, yeah. All right, so let me close the public comment section here. Try and share with you to get some, some facts straight here, guys, all right? So we have not taken this up for two years, okay? It is, two years ago, when we met, March twenty twenty, we had somewhat of a proposal that we could consider. But it had so many unknowns, it had not been flushed out, it had not been, other entities within Orno here hadn't weighed in. We said, "This is really too soon to say anything." And so if you go back to the meeting minutes Eleanor, which she said you read today, I applaud you because they were very long, seventeen pages, I believe, we didn't have enough to either support it or stand in the way or deny it. And that's where it stands, that's where it stands. It has not come back to us, it may never come back to us. It's, it's moved on and it's up to, up to other entities outside of the Parks Commission.
What?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, what entities?
Who makes the decision?
We, we are an advisory committee to the city council. Right now, the city council, Victoria, is going to probably start, or is going to start a small group, cross-functional group, to help respond to any, any future proposal that comes from the rowing club. Right now, there isn't even a proposal on the table. So I just wanted to explain to you that that is not going, that's not currently on our docket. It's, we may not, never be on our docket. I appreciate all the comments that you made, they are, they have been noted, okay? They've been noted for city council and for the, for Orno. So it wasn't a waste of breath tonight, but I just wanted to explain how the process works. As far as Lowry goes, Lowry Woods, thank you again for your comments. There's no consideration right now, nor has there been for, since, I think you said, November twenty twenty, to have any mountain bikes in Lowry Woods. There's, we don't even ac- access, bikers don't even have access currently to Lowry Woods. So there's nothing that we're considering or going to be considering in the near future about that, so. Do you wanna comment on that one specifically?
I'm not sure. So my name is Rick Carter, and I'm Trails Committee Chair, and I'm also the Lowry Park Commissioner. So we do have a goal, and it might come up later today, to create public access from the loose line to Lowry Woods. But there's no plan to consider mountain biking in Lowry Woods. And I'm happy to talk to anybody anytime you can get my contact information and reach out to me.
Who's responsible, is the police department or who's to monitor the violations against the private property invasion?
Public comments are over, but I think your question is about enforcement. Enforcement is, is done by the police department. Yep. Okay. Anything else that you guys wanna comment on or respond to? Okay. Great. All right, so our next matter of business is the assignments updates slash goals for the year. Do we have, we don't have the papers. You said that? It's in your, it's in your packet. Saving paper. I wonder if this is more, you're pretty about eleven, you didn't have eleven, you cut it in your packet. Okay. And then Josh cut the bits and put them on the slide for it. Okay, thank you. Josh. All right, so every year, we do two things. Like I said, we go through our goals and we set the sub-subcommitments. But we also assign all of our parks to commissioners here. So we currently don't have any open parks.
French Creek.
French Creek, Jennifer, got it. Is that the only place we see her name?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's up to you guys. Start, I guess, with Cameron, go this way. Do, are you good with the assignments? And if anyone wants to take French Creek, we need that assigned as well.
Yeah, there was, I don't think we really talked about this at the, the other last month's meeting. I am currently not assigned to any parks. If anybody wanted to give up one, as you go around, you're welcome to, you know, give up. I am not very familiar with French Creek, but that doesn't mean I wouldn't have an actual role in it though. So I'll probably pass for now, and if somebody else.
Is that you volunteering for French Creek?
I'm happy to, but I'm also willing, if somebody else wanted to give up that park as well.
It's a lovely park.
Okay. Jersey?
Um, yeah, and so are we looking, so I don't see my name on this one. However, I do see it on the more detailed second page, and, and that, that looks great.
All right, let me ask you this, are there any parks that you're passionate about that you would like to handle?
Well, I, I am passionate about the future of Crystal Bay. And I think Casey and I may be discussing that, I think you actually live in the area, right? I'm happy to.
Yeah, this is, these assignments are just, the expectation is that you visit the parks every once in a while and know any maintenance issues, get them back. Obviously, Josh and his crew is, are out there, but.
Yes, and so are you asking about the French Creek, the, or is it sort of, and, and, yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean.
Um, you live a little closer than I believe.
Yeah, so, I mean, that would be, yeah.
Okay, great.
French Creek.
I guess we should have started with the people. Yeah, you're sorry, Casey.
So again, I'm not aware of like your passions or anything like that, but either of you, if you were interested in Hackberry or Lurton Park, I have quite a few parks here. Those are parks that get a little bit more use, if you were interested in traveling to and following up on. I'd be willing to give up either of those assignments.
I, I would take this, I would be interested in Hackberry, I could check on it very, you know, again.
What was the other one?
Um, Lurton.
You also have Seven Nations.
I would be interested in Highwood too, if you were interested.
Sure, yeah.
Great, I'll take that.
Elena? You're fine with the beaches, right?
Yep.
But you are Summit and Sandy and Casco Point.
Yep, and then I guess I'm doing Casco Point Park.
Casco Point Park and Lake Access points, okay?
Does someone else do, even more people want to have Lake Access, are we good? Or we just decide to put?
Perhaps, we'll talk, that's one of my comments when we get to my end.
Never mind, I'm sorry.
Uh, I will stick with Casco and I will concede Hackberry, Jersey. And I'll concede the golf course, the Gorgon. To you and Russ Street. Okay, and I'll keep Sauri.
So I'm good with Peter Wood, Big Island, Lowry, and Pleasant View. And I'm curious what we mean by lead commissioner on the trails. Kind, is it kind of the same thing, or is that our committee more or less?
It's basically the same thing, somebody who's walking those trails periodically to let us know what they think about.
Well, I didn't think I was walking all those trails. I think we have another person on our trails committee, so maybe we'll just talk about that when we meet. And if we need more than the three of us, we can ask for help. Unless somebody knows right now that one of those trails is like in your backyard and you wanna adopt it. Okay, we'll take it as a committee and we'll put it down.
I guess, uh, golf course would, would be one that I'd be interested in running points on. And then Hackberry is one I'd be interested in if there's, if there's a person involved there. Okay. You, Jersey, can, I'm ready. Okay. All right, uh, next matter of business is the goals. And again, we had our meeting in January, the workshop meeting, come up with the subcommittees, the focuses for the year. We filled out the goals, we filled out the committee members. I then looked at it and said, wow, we've got a lot of, a lot of stuff on our plates for the year. And so I know that I've talked to, I think I was able to connect with all of you guys about maybe moving some assignments around. Some of that still needs to be changed on this document here. But in general, do you want us to, I mean, are we supposed to go down, be through these goals? Or? The idea is that you would, you would take a vote or whatever, saying this is what you wanna do this year. Okay. And then, just so you know, Rob, we tentatively have you scheduled to come to the city council. Work session to brief the council on what the commission's going.
Work session to brief the council on what's right, what the commission's goals and the priorities are for the year.
Okay, so I'm going to make a couple edits to this, and then you guys can also add edits, but I think Jersey comes off of Summit?
Yeah, and, you know, I see that Gordon is here, um, listed for Hackberry Park, and I will be participating in the trail, so I'm happy to, to give that to you.
Okay, alright, you won the bar wrestle. And Casey comes off of Hackberry too. Great, Casey?
Yep.
And then I come off of Crystal Bay. And, oh, and, I mean, you, you come off of Pickleball, I believe. And I think I go with Pickleball. Is that what we talked about?
I don't remember, but that's totally fine.
Okay. Okay, so I would also propose that we add a title to Trails.
Add the golfers in them.
And I would also propose that we change Trials to Trails in the purpose.
Perfect. And we, we'll work on our milestones sometime here, we're not going to work in session, but I don't think that, so.
No, it's more what your roles are.
Goals are, I'm sorry.
So, uh, any other edits to this? You guys see? Okay, but then, do I have a motion to?
Under, under golf course, there's, uh, some, two redundant goals, five and seven, so it's.
Okay, so let's take out five. Good? Okay, and Cameron on Pickleball, Cameron's the lead, there's little asterisks.
Adam, can you just check and make sure there aren't any other ones of the Trail Six that are in the comp plan? Like, I was thinking maybe Connie would maybe need to add it down.
It's five.
So for any note.
You mean to add a note in there?
Yeah, if, if we've got two of them, let's say which number they are in the comp plan, we should make sure we have all. I think that might be one of the other ones.
Yep. Okay, do I hear a motion to pass this? If we're ready.
I would move that.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
I am second.
Okay, propose to pass this. Uh, you guys, we've, like I said, we have a lot to do, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, we have a great group here, I'm looking forward to working with all of you guys. I know we're going to make a lot of, um, good improvements impact for, uh, the city this year, the parks, so. Alright. Where was the nearest topic here? Nice calendar, this is the calendar, oh. This also, we also talked about this in January, I believe we moved the September one, that got updated. Anyone who wasn't here in September, or in January, sorry, um, we just looked at this to make sure it made sense. We moved the September one to a Wednesday, just because of the holiday, and having school time, I thought that's always a little easier than Tuesday.
The September meeting was a work session, and that was moved to August first. And the July meeting was scheduled for the fifth, and that was moved to the sixth.
And then again. Okay.
Moved it to Wednesday.
So the August first is not a, a workshop, that's a formal meeting.
Correct.
That aligns all of your second month from each quarter to being a regular meeting.
Okay. Uh, can we not keep the formal meeting in September?
You can, that was actually a, a staff ad that, uh, Josh and I threw in there, because our preference is that you meet formally in August, so that we can.
For the budget.
For budget.
Okay.
Because in September, uh, we're trying to pitch that to the council on your behalf. And so having, having had the opportunity to bring it to you in August.
Okay.
Solidifies all that, particularly the capital improvement plan stuff that you want to do. That way we were, um, working with the council, we're able to tell them.
Okay.
What the park commission is wanting to do.
I think that makes sense, thank you.
Um, the, the plan with this is if you're good now with this draft calendar, then the, the council is the one who has to set meetings, so we will put this on the next council agenda.
Okay.
For them to make those, uh, amendments.
Do you need a motion just from us?
It would be nice if you just get, do a, do a motion that this is what you want, and we will take it to the council for you.
I, I make a motion to, uh, approve this calendar. Okay. All in favor?
I am.
So passed. Staff reports, Josh?
Alright, um, we've had a busy winter so far, it seems that we get snow almost every weekend, right in it, so staff can be in the weekend. For our plowing, we're taking care of sidewalks, trails, parking lots, uh, and now like a skating rink as well.
Where's the skating?
Skating is Casco.
Casco. How's that going?
It's going really well, yeah, it's a good partnership with the, uh, Youth Hockey Association, uh, they have their board set up, and I'll be in a slide later on, some pictures of it.
That's a little script.
Um, going through our golf course equipment, getting ready for the season, I like to, still think we have a little bit to left, but I know it's right around the corner, so, um. Yeah, reels will be sharpened, uh, we've gone through preventative maintenance, and we've ordered our new T-More for the golf course as well. So a bunch better product, and looking forward to using it. Our new park's employee Jack is doing a great job so far, and he's, he's been out plowing, he's working on the equipment, it's picture, it's been a great addition.
Yes.
Uh, one big project that we did have was the dredging at the golf course pond. The pond is our, uh, what would pull off of our irrigation cycles. It's a pretty shallow pond, full of a lot of muck, so that was dredged, uh, just a couple weeks ago. So that'll give us a much better product out on the course, to be able to pull a lot more water and without risking pulling any muck through the lines.
The other thing that this project does is a, kind of a joint project between, uh, parks and our stormwater. This, uh, stormwater pond is also along a drainage way, um, so the other benefit, uh, doing this project is we're restoring the capacity of that pond to allow sedimentation, uh, to purply out of the water before it continues on downstream, so we have a, a double winged benefit. One benefits the irrigation system of golf course, and two, it benefits our, our stormwater, uh, and, uh, removal of, uh, most particulates side of the water.
Here's our research. Uh, it, it's a lot of fun, and Jack now go to prep the, the rink, and there's always kids out on, on the rink, so it's nice to see it used. There's always a lot of skate marks, um, and it's nice to get outside and do a little work every once in a while.
Do you have to get any additional equipment to clear it?
Uh, no, we've been able to do it with our plows, shovels, working with the hockey association as well, they've been doing a really good job helping clear the rink too. So just working with them on that, and then we have a little homemade zamboni with an iron pole, and it works great.
We should, um, ask John to come back after the season and talk to us about how well, well it went.
Okay, yeah, other updates, again, we're just getting ready for the golf season, you know, it seems like we're a long ways away, but it's, it's coming fast. Going through, uh, food and beverage options with our golf course subcommittee, looking at new ideas for that. Doing a lot of seasonal, uh, hiring currently for the, uh, golf course maintenance, clubhouse staff, and parks maintenance as well. And we've been, uh, looking for a new clubhouse manager and events coordinator for the city and the golf course. We've narrowed down our search and, uh, excited to, to get our candidate in.
When will that be?
Uh, hopefully beginning of March.
We look to get the council approval, um.
One day to believe. Yes.
Alright, uh, my turn, uh, for engineering updates, uh, just the bigger projects that we have out there. Uh, one, I know you know, all know that we finished our Big Island ADA trail, but, uh, the, 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 uh, the bit for every project at the end of closing out the project, we were able to complete, uh, after your last meeting in November, so that is now fully closed out, uh, and we have received all the various grant monies, um, for that project. So, uh, we were able to make the park, uh, dedication fund whole again, as far as the, the monies that, that, that had to front, uh, for that project, uh, in the end. That project came in at, uh, seven hundred and five thousand ninety dollars and forty cents, um, so, um, most of which was in the form of grants and donations. Uh, Big Island improvements, uh, project twenty-two dash zero-three-one is really a continuation of that bigger project. Uh, we had some, uh, additional donated funds, um, from five oh one C three, um, the Big Island Legacy Group. Um, and, uh, that money is looking, uh, will be used for a, a couple additional picnic tables and security camera system. Right now, we're, we're waiting for the weather, um, we need to get an electrician out, uh, to do the quote for us to rerun electrical, um, so we can support those cameras, um, which we'll, we have forecast to do that stuff in the spring. Um, Crystal Bay Playground Improvements, twenty-two zero thirty-two, uh, we've received all the quotes, uh, we had initially, I know a couple of you helped us, uh, in reviewing quotes, uh, for the playground improvements themselves, um, but then we went and, uh, pulled additional quotes for some of the, uh, the subcontracting work within the playground, but we're going to do to see if we can get better value, um, by, uh, directly contracting some of that. Looks like we can't, um, uh, but we'll be, uh, ready to take those quotes to council, uh, in, here in, uh, February for approval, uh, with construction, um, in the spring. Um, and then finally, the, uh, twenty-two dash zero-three-three, which is the lake access marking project for this coming year. Just at staff level, uh, did complete, uh, historical review, uh, resolutions, city council minutes, any staff work we could find going back, uh, to the late sixties, early seventies, uh, looking for, uh, a, any either guidance, restrictions, or, um, direction, uh, that the council, city council had provided on any of those lake access points. After we did that, at the forty-nine, uh, named, um, lake access points in the comp, the latest comprehensive plan, um, I found, uh, seventeen of them that have resolutions of some kind associated with them. Two of them have been vacated, uh, since, uh, since the comp plan, so we don't need to worry about those, um, so it's two less. Looking at our next steps on this, to keep this project moving, um, staff, namely Josh, is going to go, um, confirm all existing improvements at any of the, uh, lake access points that we currently have, um, and then we'll be looking to, right now, I guess it's just jammed, but like a couple more, uh, parks commissioners to, to be able to, um, have staff provide, uh, our findings on that, and then looking forward to, um, determining which of these lake access points, uh, we'll, we'll add marking to that don't already have it. And then also a, a secondary thing that we'd like to provide to you is, just in doing this, we're finding maybe some potential future opportunities, um, for things that we might do at some of those lake access points if the local neighborhood is interested, so there's potentially some, um, opportunities out there, I guess is the best, best way to say it. And then also some of them, we're just finding that there's no recreational value whatsoever in that particular piece of land. They may have some other value as a utility right of way, or a drainage right of way or something, but there's no recreational value, so one of the other things we'll be looking to come back to you with is say, we should remove these lake access points from the parks program, because they're, they're, again, they don't have the recreational value, um, and we'll move them just into the public works arena where we just maintain them as, like we do our other, um, easements and right of ways and things like that. Yeah, and so that's other, subject carrying any questions on that, that's kind of the bigger, bigger projects that, where they stand right now.
Thank you both. Alright, next matter of business is Gordy is going to talk about continuation of our conversation in January, about the rebranding effort at, um, the golf course.
Sure. Um, grateful, thank you, uh, so my name is Gordy Stouffer, I live across the street from the golf course, I've lived there for five years, uh, I love the golf course, I think it's a very unique and special place, and, um, this idea of a rebrand is all rooted in just thinking of ways to make the course a little bit better. And, uh, before I get into it, uh, I, I guess I would, uh, offer an apology if I, uh, if anyone here is involved in the selection of the, the current logo, and that, none of this is meant to, it's a fine logo, I just think it might be time to look at a new one, uh, in this era that we're in right now, the golf course, and the change might be welcomed. So, um, just to, uh, walk everyone here through, um, uh, just a little bit of a history on the, the course, I think it's important as, as far as where we end up with, with the name change and, and branding proposal, um, important to get rid of a little bit of history of the course. So the course was, uh, was awarded a grant to Edward Walsh with the first order, eighteen fifty-nine, so going back quite a ways. And for the first sixty-five years of, of the property under his ownership, it was farming and, and a fruit and berry business, uh, became a pretty substantial apple orchard. That's where, um, the name Orno Orchard Road came from, um, the subdivision around there was called Orno Orchards. So, um, it was a, a functioning apple orchard for, you know, uh, many, many years, until nineteen twenty-four, uh, Frank Walsh, uh, decides to sell it. Um, the, at that point, the streets and avenues were planted on both sides of Orno Orchard Road, and a guy by the name of Leo Fesser, uh, who was the first superintendent at Woodhill, uh, right by there, agreed to buy the land, uh, for, uh, contract for deed, he paid it off for a number of years, and he, with very, uh, basic means, created Orno Golf Course, I put next slide, in nineteen twenty-four. And, uh, Woodhill, or, uh, Orno Orchards has historical significance in that it's, it's, uh, one of the first public courses in Minnesota, and it was the first public course with grass greens. Before that, they were all sand-based greens, so it is a, a, a significant course in, in golf, Minnesota golf course history. I think that needs to be celebrated every chance we can get over there, uh, but with the help of Woodhill's grounds crew, he, he built this course nineteen twenty-four, nineteen twenty-five, made more improvements. And, um, the clubhouse was built that we, it's still situated in nineteen twenty-six, and the course was originally called Orno Orchards Golf Course. You can see that, uh, picture on the, the right there is, uh, best I could find, the, the only, remember the original logo, so very, very basic, just kind of that bow, the, the name is, I think, me, Orno Orchards. Again, it was first privately owned, public, of course, in the state, um, and then in nineteen, uh, sixty-four, um, uh, the management was turned over to the city from Leo Fesser, and then, uh, so. Uh, these are some items that sit in the clubhouse, just historical in nature, but, uh, again, that scorecard, on the, on the right, you can see Monument Sign, dated seventy, the seventies, just says Orno Golf. And then the lower left was another scorecard, um, looks like they've done something kind of different with the name, um, but really no proper logo. So why rebranding, um, as everyone probably knows, over the last couple of years, the golf course has had, um, tremendous success, all golf courses have, but, um, I think we find ourselves in a great time. People are loving golf, through COVID, it's been a wonderful activity for people, um, so there's just a lot of really strongly, uh, reenerg-, sense of, uh, re-energization and, um, just a lot of activity there. I think people are really excited about the golf course, so now is a good time to think about all these things. But, um, uh, just to read this, I think with such a rich history, beautiful setting, Orno Golf Course sees a name and logo that projects a classic and tasteful brand for golfing experience that is social, fun, challenging, and playable, and played in a charming setting that can be enjoyed all seasons. So a lot of the conversations that we've been having around the golf course is how do we expand the offering there year-round, in the winter months, with cross-country skiing, trails, um, sledding, we know it was popular, but really finding ways to, to have that used more, uh, more year-round. And, um, so I think changing the name back to the original name of Orno Orchards Golf Course with a new logo as well, time as we enter this newly energized area, and particularly as we approach the hundred-year anniversary in twenty twenty-four. Um, I won't go through all this, but, um, kind of, the rebranding mostly will involve kind of a, a more concerted marketing effort. Um, there hasn't been a whole lot of that in the past, but I think through social media channels, Facebook, Instagram, um, you know, new website would, would be involved there. Um, you know, having a consistent marketing message, message that this is, uh, an affordable, casual, fun place to play golf, really just finding ways to, all the people that come to the golf course, finding us to keep them and keep them coming back, so that, um, you know, we don't fall back into some of the times that, I think people here could probably remember, where the course wasn't doing as well. So really just trying to maintain and preserve that. Physical items that we would need for this would be new scorecards, pin flags, walk-off mats, repaint the monument sign, and new tee box signs. And, uh, I would estimate a cost for this would be in the five thousand seventy-five hundred range. Uh, so here's our current logo, uh, uh, respectfully, in my opinion, it is a bit dated, and it's a little bit limited in its use, doesn't really, uh, lend itself to year-round connotations, directly refers to golf only, that's not very versatile for different seasons and the limitations on apparel options. So, uh, I have some personal friends that are in the logo marketing branding world and they offered some help here, um, for a bono. So working with them came up with a couple of options that we explored during our working session. They range from traditional, uh, to kind of more retro on the upper right and then some more modern takes on the bottom. Um, but through all this, uh, it was pretty clear the one that stood out to me the most, um, is this one. So this is the logo that I would propose the course adopt. Uh, this is a classic typeface, um, that was used a lot in the early nineties with Apple Nike and Oakley ads, people might remember. But it's a, it's a really great typeface font that, um, I think would work well. And then you can see on the, the apple, you know, going back to the orchards thing. And then the little O is the O from that original scorecard. So tying it all the way back to the best we could find, the original logo. Um, I think this is a, you know, can refer to, you know, a place for more than just golf. It's got a lot of options for apparel. Just kind of flip to the next one. These are just different iterations of how you can use that logo in different marks, um, if you just standalone. This would be examples of, uh, pin flags. Um, and so the goal here would be to work with our little subcommittee we're gonna create and Josh and the rest of the commission come up with, you know, specifics and timing of rolling this out over, you know, ideally as soon as possible this year, um, certainly by next year. Um, you've gone here, you know, this is my crude, uh, PowerPoint, uh, work with the logo, so I'll start with that. But, um, and here's just how I look on, you know, ball markers and sweatshirts and hats and so. That's really it. Um, maybe go to the next slide. Lastly, um, yeah, again, just there's a list of things that we would need to update. Um, I've already secured the handle on Instagram, so whenever we need to kick off that, we can. Um, and I think this ideally would be done in tandem with the kitchen upgrades we've been talking about. Um, we've been exploring, um, enhancing food and beverage offerings there, putting some money in the kitchen. Um, and, uh, just kind of keep people there longer, spending more money. And, uh, yeah, so, uh, the goal would be to work on this for the next couple of months to really hone in on lead times for those various items. And then, um, I guess can talk more about the next steps for being, uh, council approval.
Great. And so what, uh, great work. Thank you again. What would you like from us tonight?
Uh, just maybe, uh, do people, are, does everybody on board with this? Do they like the idea? Uh, does it resonate with folks, uh, with your position? Uh, I haven't read it yet, but, okay.
It's, um, just as far as process, again, we talked a little bit in the work session, just so it's on the record. Um, so this would constitute renaming a park, uh, that power rests with the city council. Um, so one of the parts of the process at some point, whether it's tonight or in the future, is this body voting to say, yep, we're in favor of option A, B, C, or none, whatever the case may be, um, so that we can then take that to the city council. Um, and then I guess we're gonna do the same page over again. Okay.
Feedback or input?
I think it looks very well thought out, clean. Um, I think it coincides with any other changes relating to the golf course at a similar time. Um, I think marketing the golf course better and for more purposes than just golf, you know, just perfect time. I, I think well thought out and classic and clean.
Yeah, we talked about in the work session, but I appreciate the effort that you've put in, Gordy. I think there's a lot of energy behind it. Uh, whether it is the kitchen or just bringing people back to it, um, I'm excited. You know, a couple of years ago, you could just drive right up and you knew, you knew you'd get on. Uh, and so just to see the excitement around the golf course, uh, pick back up in the last couple of years. Uh, be exciting to, to get some marketing, some new equipment, uh, and all they love and, and I'm excited. I think the logo looks great and I'm in favor for it right now.
Should we move approval?
Yeah, I-
We moved, I think we made a recommendation to the council.
Yep, so the other thing you might wanna discuss is, uh, timing. Um, cause if you're gonna recommend, move forward to this, also recommend when, um, when this rebranding will take place. Is something you wanna do this year, which staff would recommend against?
Yeah, I, I think-
Or something we do in coordination with, um, like any other, like improvements we might do to the clubhouse or what have you, you know, this time next year. So it's all done and ready for the next season or-
Tied into the, the hundredth anniversary that's twenty twenty-four, however you wanna do that.
Um, but I, I would recommend to talk about that a little bit too, so that, um, if we go forward to the council, we can also give them, um, an idea of how this thing would work in space and time. And then obviously we can start trying to tie budget together for next year.
Just to, I throw, I think this needs to happen, like, all at once. This thing could be rolled out, you know? I mean, you can start a online social media campaign, get a website, and you can just start that and then over time where, as funds are available. You know, I don't think it needs to be everything at once, but, um, and I'm always for seizing the moment when there's momentum. But I get that these things take time.
Yeah, and I, I think it, it would be nice to, to just socialize a, a little bit with the community and neighbors and, and folks who use the golf course. And, um, and just kind of, you know, put it out there soft first and before maybe making a proposal to council. I, I, I personally like it. I think it's great. I think it's, um, I think it's nice to rebrand. I love the premise of having it be, you know, more than just golf, because I think that's kind of the direction we're going in. And that it's rooted in some history and, you know, in place. And so, um, but I, I, I guess I would just support what Adam was suggesting, a little bit longer of a, of a rollout period.
The other thing you might just, uh, again, prompt me to think about at times we've done similar things in the past, um, is a solid, like you said, a solid rollout and putting some, uh, you know, billboard or whatever in the clubhouse, particularly early this season. Where you're getting options to, you know, our current patrons, hey, what do you think about this one, this one, that one, stickers on or whatever, you know?
Maybe focus on, you know, the lower, yeah, lower cost things, or there was, you know.
I think, I think especially since we're going to do the holiday tree lighting, that's going to be our community event. I think that's where we start rolling that out and really showcasing it at the tree lighting. I know people are there for something else, but that's how I see it progressing.
Yeah, um, so I would, I see this in two steps, right? The name change and the, and then if so, then the brand branding. So perhaps maybe I'll move that we will, or make a motion that we adopt the new change, or the change in name, um, and recommend that to the city council as of one-one-twenty-three, the new named park as of then. And then once, and, and then we're gonna have to roll out the branding for that name, which could come there somewhere thereafter. But up until then, from now till then, we can, you know, test out some of the branding ideas with the patrons and so forth. So, so my motion is to, um, to change the name of the golf course, Park, to Orno Orchards Golf Course, and make that proposal to the city council.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I agree.
Close? Okay, so we got that step in place and then we'll work through this year on the actual look and, you know, if that passes. Okay. Go. Thanks, Gordy. Right, uh, item eight, commissioner updates, uh, which I know Jean has on, so I'll go to her first.
Okay, well, we received a call on, like, Tuesday, um, with a request that, uh, Long Lake Water Association would like to hold a Earth Day, uh, event on Saturday, April twenty-third. And what they're doing is they're going to have, uh, different events, uh, on, on, at the Long Lake, East Long Lake Trail and Summit Beach. And they're going to try and show how we should be taking care of our, our earth. And, um, she also wanted to do something, uh, with putting up birdhouses along the trail. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna have these events, they're gonna go out and clean up. They're going to have, uh, little seminars on different things about the, um, nature area and the different areas there. And so I, uh, told her that I would bring this before you. Uh, I got this from her. Uh, I think it explains pretty much what they wanted to do. And so.
And what, what are they asking for, from the city for support?
Well, they were asking for nothing, just the permission to use the park and the trail. And I did say I thought they needed a permit, but now I've been told that they may not. But just that she's going to, they were gonna hold this event and-
So, um, just from a staff update on that, we did, uh, they did reach out to staff as well. Um, and so Josh will, um, take the lead on supporting them as staff. This is, I mean, it's not an unusual request. Uh, we have volunteer cleanups of our parks all the time, so. As it's laid out here, I think it's something we routinely do and so we-
Great.
It's a clean up.
Timely support though.
A clean up and an education, which is almost good.
I did not see the, uh, birdhouse proposal in this year.
No, she didn't put the birdhouse in front of us. She gave, she asked me.
That would be, um, that would take a little bit more because then you're talking about structures within the, the lake setbacks and all that kind of stuff.
But I did say to her that that would not be something that I, we would have to consider. And that would be not something I can say, yes, you can do or you can't.
Could they perhaps, like, build the birdhouses and then take them home and just install them in the park or something like that?
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah.
It's just if you were, if you were like trying to do wood duck houses or something like that, which you need to go put-
Right.
-in the water, um, that's a whole, that's just a whole different scenario. It's not impossible, but it takes a lot of coordination.
Duck houses, it's, uh, smaller houses.
Did she call it bird boxes? If there's a difference between a birdhouse and a box?
Bird box, yeah.
I just, gets that context, I was thinking they were talking about the word wood duck.
No.
Thanks.
We're not talking about that. She was not talking about that at the time I was speaking with her.
Did she, uh, have an estimate of, like, attendance or how many?
No.
About fifteen to fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen to fifteen.
Fifteen to fifteen. I would just say based on several other, like Lerton, um, if there's not enough parking, then we should contact the police and just let them know prior instead of getting reprimanded or-
And, and I did mention that, that there's a small parking lot and that there really can't park on-
Right.
-the road.
And there's not a ton.
So I, I, I did discuss that because parking would become an issue in that neighborhood.
Great, looks good. Uh, you had a-
I didn't. I didn't.
You saw where?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Um, on the news, um, uh, I'm sure they hear me, Channel Four, they, uh, had showed where people were out and about with the weather and they were, uh, at Lerton Park showing the dogs running around and everything. So we got, you know, local publicity for Lerton Park, which they thought was pretty nice. And one of the pictures, the dog bone was in it.
Nice.
Pretty.
Yeah. That's it. That's all I got.
Cameron?
Nope, everything sounds great.
Good. Kirsten?
No, uh, I think everything's good, I think.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Okay.
I do have a question. On Lydia Beach, there is a lot of cars going down there. Are you finding that there's any kind of things going on down there? Okay.
Nope, dates are locked.
It's being used a lot, which is really-
We keep it plowed.
Yeah, I notice that. That's great.
Yeah, that's the only use right now, so.
But I, I mean, it looked fine and I've gone and looked at it, but I just wanted to know if there were any issues that had been-
No issues. We do quite a few checks on the park, so we'll, we'll keep looking out for it.
No, I think it's great. And thank you for plowing it, man.
Gordy?
Um, Bill?
Rick?
I do. So just a reminder, we have, uh, a nonprofit of five oh one three C called Big Island Legacy that was set up to help create matching funds from the private sector for Big Island. It was very successful. And I'm the current chair and I'm done with my run, but, um, we've had the idea and the park commission and council's blessing to pivot it to a nonprofit that could raise funds for all of our parks, which I think would be amazing. And, uh, we have so many things that people wanna do. We have the space and we just have to figure out where to put them and find the money to do it. So we're looking for two or three more board members soon, not later. It's a pretty small commitment. We have one planning commission or park commission member who's gonna come to our meeting next time, see if that might make sense. But we're looking for people who, even if you have a particular interest, um, that's okay. We'll, we'll have a group of people who will be looking to raise private dollars to bring into public parks. And that board can figure out how to go get that money. So if you have any interest whatsoever, know somebody who might please reach out to me. That's Rick Carter.
Great, good. Um, now, our next meeting is a workshop format in March, whatever, March seventh, I think. Um, and it, it's a great opportunity for us to get going on our subcommittees and bring any updates. Then I don't think we have anything right now on the agenda other than updates from our subcommittees then.
So can we find out using some of the time for work as well?
We can do that as well too. Yeah, so we'll call, we'll talk closer to then too, but if we were able to meet between now and then and we have something to report back to everyone, then otherwise, um, we'll split the time up more for work, work times. Okay? All right, uh, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you everyone.
It's good that you're here because the morning-
It was good to see you.
Good to see you.
Is that your first?
Yeah, I just, you know, I was talking about, I was thinking about people.
And I just, you know, I was talking to them and I was thinking, like, if I was not, just get up there and say, you know, and leave it at a question. Okay, whatever.
I got a box and we can all use more. Now I would never go home with morning things.
Is that? Okay. So I see people say, well, it's, you know, it's not a bad idea.
It's a garden, yeah.
Oh, no.